3.5 Public Comments. So I want to read this section as I always do. The public comments section of the agenda is an opportunity for the superintendent and board to listen to individuals' own comments on topics concerning Wycomico County Public Schools. The board chairman has a right to limit public comments at length for those concerning personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals' appeals, or legal matters that are before the board, negotiations and topics that are more appropriately addressed in closed session, or private legally staff number. So this evening we have ten.
That would be great. But so normally I don't have a problem. I mean, you know, but this past, this past, I find it I'm under the impression that academic skills is meaning things like writing and verbal communication, listening, not taking attention to detail, reasoning, things that would help kids communicate, skills for life, for communicating with other people which if you not know, it's pretty hard these days. Kids are having hard to email me back, which is great. And I said she's not ordering this book. I don't know if that's the class for her, maybe we could do something else. And I, she explained to me that she was allowed to. It was under the guys' specials, so academic skills with cultural skills now, which was a special. And she said she was allowed to teach anything she wanted, which I thought was weird too. So there again, I said, well, can I have the curriculum and syllabus, please? And I've never had to do this before, sorry. And so she didn't give it to me. She just said she can pick another book. So my granddaughter picked another one.
Thirty seconds.
My granddaughter picked another book, and that was more crazy than the first book. So we have the book here, my husband has it, at least for us. We're Christians, I believe not, so it just went not along with what I would like my granddaughter's values to be at all. So today I called the school, the principals, and I did the other day too. Nobody called me back, not one principal. So I went above them and called the board of education because I wanted to, you know, get her out of the class. I said, or I'd be removing her for the class.
Hi, sorry.
So anyways, if they're gonna be a class, we should really say academic skills immediate, academic skills not. We should let people know what it is.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
They don't care. No, they don't care.
Martin Bebrick, issue, questions?
Good evening, folks. As my wife laid it out earlier, I'm just gonna go straight to the point. My name is Dr. Martin, and my granddaughter is a student in the sixth grade at Mardella Middle School. Part of our education is to have a class of academic skills. My wife and I learned recently that this class is also called cultural skills class. We focus primarily on Asian culture. We have no problem with Asian people. We have no problem with Asian history or other culture. But what we learned is totally different than we expected. The books used in this class are considered made in anime. For some folks are very popular. They're specifically made up combinations of cartoon characters. Some of these characters communicate with each other by text messages and emails. Some of these characters have, some of these characters have magical powers, and all of them are fake. It is hard for me to explain, so I brought one of these books with me, and I'm gonna read it to you. The book is called Maximum Ride by James Patterson. On the cover of this book, we have a little girl that's holding a chocolate chip cookie with a rainbow. Very innocent picture. When I open this, I read this, one of the very first pages. Max, which is one of the characters, the cartoon character. Max and her flock are genetic experiments created by a mysterious lab known as the school, school beginning in parentheses. Their genetic cots have been spliced with ABN DNA, given them wings and the power to soar. What they lack are homes, families, and the memories of real life. After escaping from the school, the flock is hunted by the racers, agents of the school who transform them into terrifying wolf creatures. And a chap, a bachelor, a man once thought of their father. Despite targets of the bad, the flock is desperate to learn about their individual past, and their inquiries lead them to Washington DC, where they meet Special Agent Ann Walker of the FBI, who takes them and gives them a flock, gives the flock taste of normal life, only to betray them in the end.
Thirty seconds.
Folks, I don't know if you want me to continue with this, but this is not what I would call a class of academic skills for my autistic sixth grade, the sixth grader student at Mardella Middle School. She has a history of being abused in the past. We adopted her from Arizona where she was left in the room when she was five years old. Okay? So with that in mind, there's another book in their library.
Hi, I'm sorry.
And that book says, one of the characters, another character of anime, says, if you don't go along with our plan, I will just kill all them kids myself. Where are we?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
We have a, we have a violence problem in this country, in schools, outside of schools, and we're teaching them this crap.
Hi, thank you.
So my question, I have a last question. Thirty seconds, sir.
I can't do that because I have other people behind you and that.
My question to the board is, who puts up this, this material for our kids to read? That's all I, I like, I hope you get the message.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Jones. Issue is learning.
Hello, hello, how are you? All right, so I've got five things in three minutes, so it's gonna be quick. First, TAD, one of my eight-year-olds is in TAD. It's a beautiful experience, it's wonderful, and he's learning a lot, he's learning in the personal skills, is a beautiful partner, and hats off. Two, reading comprehension. If you do any Google search, if you look at any research from COVID, we have learned, just real quick search, you'll find all the research that says, reading on screen, you do not learn and comprehend material when all you do is read off the screen. Okay? Why are my third graders and my first grader still reading on a screen? During COVID, that was necessary. It was like the necessary evil. COVID gave us a lot of skills. We should not still be using all of them with paper and pencil or better. They've got these little laptops, which I'm grateful for, and I taught eight-year-olds how to have part of the screen the book, and the other part of the screen the Google Classroom document, so they can type the answer to the question on this little screen. Why can't they use a paper and pencil? I mean, they're eight. Okay. Next, for some unknown reason that I do not understand, which I would love clarification on, is East Osprey Elementary School does not believe in homework. That was, I found out today, that was a decision made in administration. What level of administration? I don't know. So we've had these kids out of regular instruction for two years, they are behind in everything. I think everybody agrees there's learning loss, and we're not giving homework at all. So as a very active parent, I am very vocal with my teachers and letting them know, help me. I'm a math teacher, I spent 10 years in a public school, I can teach them math facts. My boys have got math right, left, upside down. I've gotten their comprehension off. However, phonics and writing, I am not a writing teacher. So I talked to the teacher again today, and I said, help me. This child just took another spelling test, he failed it yet again, and no words come home for him to study to practice. I mean, before COVID, we would have a list of words, and Monday we'd write five times each, and Tuesday we'd use each word and set and yada, 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 done the homework. Now, now nothing comes home. The kid not failing.
Thirty seconds.
So help with that would be great. Last thing, parent conferences. Last time we had parent conferences after report cards, you know how I found out? I found out when one of the twins' teachers called. Oh, it's parent conference night. Really? I am usually on top of my stuff, I missed that. I said, how come I didn't know? She said, well, we didn't tell anybody. I said, what? She said, we didn't tell anybody because we thought they were gonna move it, but they didn't move it, so they told us on, I'm getting there, maybe, I'm getting there. Told us on Friday, so it's Wednesday, we didn't think parents would have enough time, so I'm calling you. Did I get a call from the other two teachers? No, one of them is hunting now. Haven't talked to the other one yet.
Thank you.
Parent process would be nice to hear right now.
Our next speaker is Garrett McGahey. Secondary schedule and budget are the issues.
All right, good evening, thank you. My name is Garrett McGahey. I'm a veteran teacher of 19 years, the last five in Wycomico, the first 13, so year six in Wycomico, the first 13 in Worcester. I've taught advanced placement American history for 17 years in two school districts. I'm also a parent of two Wycomico County Public School students who will eventually be in high school. I first want to start by thanking you for recognizing the need for the half-day for our instructors and school staff. Your concern, quick action, practical, listening, and application of this has been very welcomed and helpful to all of us, so I want to thank you for that. I'm here to raise a few points. The first, bring awareness to the reality of our current semester-based schedule. Through my calculations and that of my colleagues, we've concluded that students in advanced placement classes that are gifted and talented are losing hundreds of hours of instructional time. If a student takes AP in the fall, it's equivalent to 11.8 class periods. If a student takes AP in the spring, it's equivalent to 55 days of lost instruction. That's 2,700 minutes of instruction being lost in the spring semester of which the AP test is being given. Students are not getting what they need to be successful. This hurts our gifted and talented students the most, and with the push for more students to take rigorous AP courses, it's setting many of those students up for failure with lasting consequences. I ask for this to be reviewed. I would also like to have us consider growth in our CTE program and conversation with local construction business leaders in the community. I understand the average age of construction workers is 59 years old. I think that we need to grow our CTE program to serve those that don't go to college and provide good opportunity, blue collar class opportunities in those service industries. And lastly, I'd like to address the budget. I'd like to show my support for an increased budget along with teacher salary increases. I'd like to see an increase in spending in our extracurriculars as they provide opportunities for students that make school a better experience and they become more academically successful as a result. We're in the people's business. Those we serve are growing, developing, and need to be surrounded by the best possible adults. It's our duty as those adults to surround our children with the best possible teachers, putting them in the best possible scenarios for success. I want my children and all children in this county to have great role models, teachers with passion, adept of knowledge.
Thirty seconds.
Pedagogy, mentors and coaches who inspire young people, bring out the best in those young people, put them in positions to be successful and achieve their goals. I do realize that we cannot compete with Worcester County's revenue base, but I see no excuse for us not to be the second best, most funded school on the lower shore. I want us to be the best, I want us to be the change we want to see in the world, and I ask you to do the same for all of us here. Do your best for our children, our community, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristin Hazel. Issue is computers.
Meeting school board members. I wanted to discuss the laptops the children are looking at. Having a balance between online activities and normal handwritten assignments has become a serious problem. Using computers for every assignment in school does not make sense and is hindering our children's ability to learn. I have been helping my kids with assignments at home, and I've noticed that they have now forgotten things that they used to be able to spell before, it was not a problem. They tell me they don't need to know how to spell because the computer has a spell check, and they never had, had it graded, it's never been graded anyway. How is this not a problem, a long-term problem for our kids? The administration doesn't think the kids in this county need to be able to spell. I have seen a story from my daughter that is, she's written, had come home and has had tons of spelling and grammar problems, but it's not even mentioned on the graded paper, and she's given full credit for the assignment. How is not correcting a child helping them learn how to do things correctly? The structure of some of the assignments being that they are done in a slide ship presentation, and you have to go back and forth between 20 and 30 slides to find answers is not feasible either. I helped my son last night with an assignment that he, that got me frustrated in the short time that I was working on with him, because you couldn't easily go back and look at the reading and definitions to figure out how to do the assignment. I'm supposed to expect my son with a learning disability to spend five minutes looking for an answer, which would have been way easier had it been in a workbook or on a worksheet to refer back to. If I wanted my child to be behind a screen all day, I would have had them in online learning and not had them sent to school. They should be interacting with the other kids and learning directly from the teachers, not given work on the computer to do. All classes are doing classwork on the laptop, and I don't understand why. My son is also starting to complain about his eyes hurting. Do we really need to have irreparable damage done to kids' eyes just to keep computers in their life in case we ever need to go back to virtual again? That's not a reasonable option for me. I know that this board is able to change curriculum guidelines, and I'm asking for a limit on computer work to be set to a low percentage on assignments. Currently, our children are becoming busy bee worker robots, and I'm not learning, they're not learning how to be problem-solving, creative-minded adults. In the WCBOE website, it says dedicated to excellence in education. Is excellence what our children are receiving right now? I would say not hardly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Smith. Issue is educator salaries through WCPS.
Good evening, Dr. McGanlon. Chairman Malone, board members, and guests. You know, positions remain unfilled as educators, including teachers, counselors, support staff in all areas of Wycomico County Public School operations are leaving our buildings. The substitute shortage is an ongoing problem, causing havoc for students and staff. Teachers and support staff cover for colleagues, cutting down on essential planning time, time to set up for science labs, props for demonstrations and tech classes, and finding and making additional support materials for our struggling students. Educators see a sharp increase in the social and emotional needs of students that often result in acts of destruction in our schools and outbursts of violence. We all understand that students' social and emotional needs have to be met before we can help them make academic progress. However, continuing to support and lift the trauma of students adds more stress and hours of workload for teachers and support staff. Under these conditions, it is no wonder that our educators' stamina is waning. For some, a position in another county seems inviting, not too far to travel, wages that allow families to be together, not outworking two or three jobs just to meet ends meet. The correlation between staff appreciation, pay, and retention is real. The commitment and passion of teachers and support staff on every level of the salary scale in recognition of their critical role in providing for our children justifies a considerable raise. The Wycomico County Council has said that they fund what you ask. No one does our jobs better than we do. Invest in us. Consigning educators to yet another year of inadequate compensation is unconscionable. A deeper investment in Wycomico County Public School employees is overdue. Our students deserve the best. It's up to you to provide that opportunity for them. 2021 was a long and difficult lesson in patience and perseverance. Now is the time to look beyond the surface to achieve our limitless potential. Now is the time for you to craft a budget for salaries that will retain and recruit employees for our Wycomico County Public School system, even if that means presenting to the county executive and county council with a budget far above maintenance of effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Matthew Langford. Issue, library book.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Grandparent, Grandparent, present a presentation of Exposing the Truth. Exposing the Truth is based on Johnson, 19 to 21. So what we do is shine hard and expose what is in the darkness, so others can see what is true. You know, I've always heard that you can't judge a book by its cover. Hmm, I don't know about that. Here we go. All Boys Are Blue by George Young Johnson. Warning: Material of an adult nature. This literature is not intended for minors. Feel discredited is advised. I am respectfully requesting that all the minors leave the room for the next 10 minutes. At the monitor exiting the room, as you can see in the video, All Boys Are Blue is in the Mardella Middle and High School Library, as well as the Parkside High School Library. That search in, three, two, one.
Losing my virginity twice. I never dreamed dreaming about sex with another boy. When I did think about sex, I was a girl having sex with a boy. He reached his hand down and pulled out my dick. He quickly went to get my head. I just sat back and enjoyed it, as I could tell he was too. He then came up and asked me if I wanted to try it on him. I said, sure. I began, he said, watch your teeth. So I slowed down and took my time, and luckily got into a good rhythm, my best to act dominant, like my favorite film star. I was an actor, and this was my movie. His body felt great in my mouth. For the first few minutes, we tried until he wanted it. I was behind him with my stomach on his back as we kissed. I had one point of reference though, and that was my seven-plus years of watching Bon Iver. I put some lube on and got him on his knees, and I began to slide into him for a while. I tried not to force it because I imagined that it would be painful, so I eased in slowly until I heard him moan. As we moved, I could tell he was excited. We went at it for about 15 minutes before I started to get that feeling, weakness in the legs, numbness in the waist. I finally came to let out a big moan to the point where he asked me to run.
Thirty seconds.
I thought I was gonna need his still while he was excavated, then he also came.
This is homosexual porn operating in the form of students. Sick.
And you're allowing this book to be on schools?
Thank you.
Come on, guys.
That's outrageous. That really is.
We, we don't usually respond to public comment, but we will. Well, let me, let me finish.
Not acceptable, not acceptable, one bit.
Let me finish because we were prepared for this, and we knew about this book's location, and we've already dealt with it. I'll let Dr. Hamlin speak to that now.
Right, you are correct. When, when we understood, I believe, that Mr. Langford, not sure.
You stop right now. You do not interact with us, it's time for the next person.
No, I will speak. The chair has asked you to speak. The, I think it's important that the community knows the answer to this question. Is that not important to you? All right.
All right, we'll do this, we'll do this.
This is public comment.
You can cover this under superintendent's report, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker is Jennifer Leeson. Issue is library.
We took each other's clothes off, fast but deliberate. After, he told me to lie down on the bed. He asked me to turn over while he slipped a condom by himself. My heart immediately started to race. Nervously, I asked him what he was doing, and he said, you, when things hold down, I ain't never been wrong. He looked at me and said, well, that's about to change tonight, but this was my ass, and I was struggling to imagine someone inside of me, and he was large, but he had been enjoying any sex before I was. I listened and got on my stomach. He got on top and slowly inserted himself into me. I can't say that I didn't enjoy it, because I did, and those few minutes though, I can say that he was gentle. His aim wasn't to hurt me, and my aim was for him to be pleasured too. He didn't last long inside of me, thankfully. He gave me a kiss before he pulled out. I didn't stay too long, nor did I masturbate after. This book will touch on sexual assault, including molestation, loss of virginity, homophobia, racism, and anti-blackness. Within this audiobook, a nigger or n***a appears, sometimes in full and sometimes revealed. If you don't identify as black, African-American, or queer, don't use these words anymore. Anyhow, society, I was still a n***a. I was never called a n***a, because that person doesn't how I call you a n***a or a f*** or both, a country n***a from the South, dealing with that face that said, you n****s ought to be ashamed.
Is this a CRT book? Well, let's let the author answer this question.
And frankly, I'm not even sure if it fits with the themes of blackness or queerness or critical race theory in this book, nor do I really care, because black ladies are born into oppression despite any additional marginalizations. It's important that I say this because the white community has long forbidden black progress in every arena. The statements that explain why we needed Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, Mecca Everest, and every other black activist over 100 years later, because freeing the slaves didn't really free us, but about the dangers of interacting with non-black people because they will assume the worst of you as a black boy, a God-fearing church-going woman who thought white people were the devil, and she used to say it proudly.
This is just a handful of statements by the author that refer to the oppressed, the oppressed.
Thirty seconds.
And victim of them. Believe me, there are many, many more statements just like these that are in this book.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Stephanie Burke. Issue is school issues.
So we've heard some things tonight that are absolutely shocking. You got it?
I had never been wrong. He looked at me and said, well, that's about to change tonight, but this was my ass, and I was struggling to imagine someone inside of me, and he was large. He got on top and slowly inserted himself into me. I can't say that I didn't enjoy it, because I did, and those few minutes though, I can say that he was gentle. His aim wasn't to hurt me, and my aim was for him to be pleasured too. He didn't last long inside of me, thankfully. He gave me a kiss before he pulled out. I didn't stay too long.
I can't hear it. This is crazy. As a parent, as a future grandparent, as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen, I'm very concerned. Our kids are sexualized everywhere they go, and the school needs to be a haven of safety. If I were to have this book available as a daycare mom on my shelves, I would be arrested for grooming. It, it's just preposterous. It's absolutely preposterous that this is available to our children in schools. Absolutely, and this needs to end. Your, your time to be concerned, Wes paying you to review this. Who is reviewing these coming into our book, to our, to our library? Your time to be concerned, Wes paying you to review this, who is reviewing these coming to our libraries? Because they don't need to work on it, this is horrible. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Darren Lobardo, School Matters is the issue.
Good evening, Lord. I wanted to come here tonight and talk to you about some very important things here as it relates to what we just heard. And wait, there's more, that's just one of many. And you know what, as a school system, we're not about banning books. We need to teach kids how to think, and we need to teach them things to explore and to learn things, but not this kind of trash. DEI, or I should say DIE, D-I-E, D-I-E, Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity. Okay? You call these libraries, you call these teaching materials in the curriculum Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity, when in fact it's designed to divide our families, attack our religious values in our families, sexualizing our children to groom them for your own deviant sexual desires, disgusting. And doing all sorts of things to make them rebel, being lawless, disrespecting the police, disrespecting law and order. No wonder we're having a mass exodus, the teachers are gonna leave in droves this upcoming year. Why is that? It's the poor leadership. And never mind your powerful state. Support your power, and you have the most powerful position in the entire state. They have judicial, executive, and legislative powers, nobody else has that, they have it. And they've been negligent with it, negligent, okay? Years, they're grade fixing in this county, altering grades, I could prove it all day long, you want to go there? The things that you are doing, you have failed our children. And the status quo can no longer be. It is absolutely unacceptable, and it's up to everyone here, everyone here. The future is held in your hands. You can make the decision of tomorrow. I don't care who you vote for, as long as it's new, but I do encourage you to vet the people that step up to the plate. And a lot of them are here tonight, look into them, vet them, see what they stand for. Because a lot of them don't have websites or Facebook pages, vet them, alright? Because this is serious, we are at a pivotal point here, and all of these people have failed us. Alright? So where are we gonna go with this? Where are we gonna go? Block scheduling has been a failure, watering down the content, dumbing down our children, lowering the bar to make everyone normal. So what are we gonna do next in the name of equity? Are we gonna put weights on our basketball players so they can't jump and run as fast as everyone else? Where does it end? It's ludicrous. So, anyway, cut it out and straighten it out.
Our next speaker is Sandra Spedman, issue is General.
After what I've heard tonight, I'm gonna relinquish my time because I'm just shocked by what I've heard tonight.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you for the public comments, a lot of the comments had questions, they'll be posted to the website, as you know, we began doing that a couple of months ago, so a lot of those that had questions that need to be answered will-